All right, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Karen, Commissioner from the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. With me is Chairman of the Public Utilities Authority, Chairman Commissioner Arthur House, and our General Counsel Tom Caruso. We will -- oh, certainly. Sorry. Thank you. Feel free to throw something if I miss the cue. Very close. All right. All right. Thank you. Let's see. So we still have sign-up sheets, so anyone coming in, we have Ally Ayot from PURA staff out collecting names for people who want to continue or who come in subsequently who want to speak. I just want to go over very quickly what this is, also what this isn't. This is not a debate forum. This is not a question-and-answer period. However, we have invited representatives from the Aquarian Company to come give a short presentation of who they are, what they do, and what they're trying to accomplish. We on the Authority, we are made up of three Commissioners. Vice Chairman Jack Bekowski is the lead Commissioner on this particular docket. However, he has an engagement with a different docket in the town of Bethel this evening, so his regrets, so I will be chairing this particular meeting. I have a few comments to make, and then I will call the meetings who order. We'll call an Aquarian to make their presentation, and then I will begin to call people up who have signed up. I understand there is a conflict with the Board of Selectment meeting. I believe it's 7 o'clock, so we'll try and move this along as quickly as possible so our members from the Board can move on to the next meeting. Also, I want to make the point that everyone who speaks tonight will be transcribed and will be under oath and will be part of the public record that you can find on our website. So, let's see. Without further ado, as I said, as promised, again, not for a debate. This is for the Authority to listen to the comments of people of Simsbury on the services provided by Aquarian Water Company. We are an administrative court with formal procedures and protocols. In order to provide due process for all, the Authority is governed by the U.S. Uniform Administrative Procedures Act, i.e., ex parte communications, for instance, are prohibited by staff and Commissioners outside of a notice meeting. Our Directors and Hearing Officers are interested in the issue of customer service, and we encourage customers of all regulated companies to let us know their feelings. Kent here?
This is Gar.
Okay. I'll keep working on it. Sorry. My name is Commissioner Michael Karen, a member of the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority. I really can't help the echo. I'll try to speak more slowly and articulate as best I can, but I didn't pick them up. Does this work better? Beautiful. I knew we'd work it out. All right. The Authority's consideration of this docket shall not be limited to the proposals of the company. The Authority will hear and consider all relevant testimony on the quality and level of service the company provides its customers. Bringing these concerns and views to a public hearing is essential if the Commissioners are to reach the most fair and reasonable decision. Letters will be accepted, and email will be accepted from members of the general public who have an interest in the outcome of this proceeding through the last day of the hearings, which is tomorrow, July 9th. So please, anything you say tonight you want to supplement with something written, please email us or mail us a letter as long as it's date marked by July 9th. All filings of evidence, exhibits, and testimony are public information except for those under protective orders. The Authority may subpoena witnesses, and all testimony is provided under oath and is transcribed into a public record. Witnesses may be and often are cross-examined by our staff and other officially designated parties or interveners. The Office of Consumer Counsel is an automatic party to all PURA dockets and has the ability to appeal all of our decisions to the Connecticut Superior Court. The Office of Consumer Counsel is designated as the official advocate of the ratepayer. The Office has a representative, Mr. Dave Thompson, here also. And if you have any questions after proceedings or sometime during the proceedings, I want to ask him afterwards, please feel free to do so. The Authority employs, the Authority and the Office of Consumer Counsel and the Attorney General's Office employ a talented and thorough staff of experts in customer service, accounting, finance, engineering, and the law. We may also hire experts if needed to supplement Authority staff and dockets that are of unusual complexity, and all decisions from the Authority have the force of law. And I would also point everyone out, and I understand people have done this already, to go to our website, go to the connecticut.gov portal, www.ct.gov. That will take you, then go to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, and there you will find the PURA website, and you can find the entire record of this docket there with the docket number. And so with that, I will hereby call this docket number 130220, application of Aquarian Water Company of Connecticut to amend its rates. Open. This hearing is now open by application dated March 28, 2013, right in the docket above. Aquarian has requested approval from the Authority to amend its rates. We are here today to listen to public information of what their experience has been with Aquarian and with the company. So with that, as promised, we have a short presentation from Aquarian. And again, it's not a question-and-answer period. It is purely informational, and after Aquarian, Mr. Silverstone is through with his presentation, we'll go into your testimony.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bruce Silverstone, and I'm the Vice President of Corporate Communications for the Aquarian Water Company. Somebody asked me earlier what my background was, and they said I should do 60 seconds. So I will tell you, I've been with the company for five years. Prior to that, I was a principal in a communications agency. Prior to that, I was with General Electric for 11 years. I'm a U.S. Air Force veteran. At Aquarian, we believe that it's important to give back to the communities we serve. So I am a volunteer EMT, and I've ridden an ambulance for 15 years and serve on several boards. So that's my background. So with that, as a prelude, thank you for being here, and Aquarian has its roots that go back to 1857, when the company began. Our wings have spread over the last 150 some-odd years, and we are now serving 47 towns and cities and over 625,000 people in those communities. I'm starting with emergency preparedness at this point because it's absolutely, you know that we have a critical product to deliver, and the product that we deliver needs to be delivered 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So we have, just so you know, we have backup power generation at all of our treatment facilities to keep the water running. We have that here in Simsbury, and during the last four storms that we've had, we've had over 99% of our customers, with the power out for days and days, over 99% of our customers had water at all times. Customer service is very, very important to us, and in the last, for the last seven years, we've had the lowest number of customer complaints of any regulated utility, including gas, electric, cable, and telephone. So we work very, very hard at providing excellent customer service. Technology is very, very important to us. As we manage our business, in 2005, we had a 21% headcount reduction, and we maintain that headcount reduction today. Technology helps us to work with reduced inventories. It helps us reduce the construction and repair costs, and when there's a problem in a water main or a customer needs particular service, it helps us get crews on-site in a very expeditious manner. Locally, some of our infrastructure investments include the Top View Tank, as you can see a before-and-after shot. When kids were playing in the taller treatment plant, it was determined that it needed to be taken away, so here we have a before-and-after photograph, and we've replaced over 6,500 feet of main here in town. We read regularly about crumbling U.S. infrastructure. Throughout the U.S., our infrastructure needs repair. Bridges, airports, highways, and ports at sea are all suffering from a lack of funding. Within the water industry, the Environmental Protection Agency last month issued a report that said the water industry in the U.S. needs $384 billion to bring it back to where it needs to be. So that's replacing water mains that are well over 100 years old. That's replacing water treatment plants that were built in the 1920s and '30s that have outlived their useful life. So $384 billion is the number that the EPA has used. We thought it might be interesting for you to see a water rate comparison. So let's start nationally. In Seattle, folks annually are paying $583. You see San Francisco's rates, Atlanta, Pittsburgh, and you see what the Northern Division is the division that you are in, and you see your annual rate. Here in Connecticut, the Metropolitan District in the Hartford area pays, a customer there pays $825 annually. You see the rates for Jewett City, Connecticut Water, Regional Water, Metropolitan District, and you see the rates that Simsbury customers pay, $394. And that, assume, that $394 is making a presumption, and we don't mean to presume, but that's with the built-in rate crease. So that $394 represents what one would pay with that, an average customer would pay, and that's using 6,000 gallons a month. Our proposed rate structure, in the last three years, we have spent $143 million in capital improvements. So that includes putting in water mains, upgrading or putting in new pump stations, upgrading treatment facilities. So we've had an increased cost for chemicals, and as many of you are aware at home, your electricity costs have increased, and so have ours. And while we do this, we also maintain 3,000 miles in infrastructure. So we are seeking at this point to recover the cost that we have spent in the last three years, the $143 million. We are not paid forward. We are paid back for what we have done, for projects we have done. And I will remind everyone or tell you that all of the work that we have done and all of our budgets are in fact approved by PURA. So we do not in fact go out and do things on our own. We maintain minimal staffing levels. As I said, we're maintaining the same level that we cut back to in 2005, and we've curtailed many of our benefits as well. So here are the new rates. Can you? Okay. So you see what they are. We had a little discussion about this, and I said I'd leave this slide up on the screen. The increased cost per day under the proposed rate structure would increase a Simsbury customer's cost by 18 cents a day, or $5.35 per month. So we continue to be one of the best-valued utilities with a gallon of water costing less than one cent per gallon. One cent. You know, I honestly, I'm sure you can appreciate this, just as an aside, and I have friends who say to me, "God put the water in the reservoir. Why do you have to charge for that?" And it's the same thing that some of you might say to me. Well, we provide a service, and that service that we provide is the treatment of the water, so you receive clean, pure potable water, and then the delivery of that water, so you have it whenever you need it, 365 days a year. We'd like to support the communities that we're in, and so on a local basis, we've contributed to the Farmington River Watershed Association. We've stocked salmon in the Farmington River. We've supported the Simsbury Celebrates Program, the Old Drake Flower Bridge, and we have assisted the Simsbury Volunteer Fire Department with donations over the last couple of years. So that is our presentation. Somebody asked me to be quick. I hope, you know, I thank you for your time, and I hope you have a better understanding of why we are asking for a rate increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Silverstone. Appreciate that. We are on the record if we weren't already, so at this, we are on the record now if we weren't already. On the record.
We are.
We are on the record. Yes. If we weren't already, that did call us to order, so we're on the record. Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen. We are on the record, and I know we have a Board of Selectment meeting for people to get to. So without further ado, Lisa Hevner from the Board of Selectmen, Deputy Board of Selectmen. Thank you. Are we going to go together?
Can we go together?
Sure. Mind if I swear you all in together?
Oh, yes.
You're all in, you're all in. And you swear the testimony about to give us the truth so help you God?
Yes.
I did.
Very good. Thank you. Please proceed. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Hevner. I'm the Deputy First Selectman for the town of Simsbury. With me is Selectmen Sean Askam and Selectmen Shannon Knoll. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. It's great to see the public taking an interest in this, and thank you to the Commission for holding the hearing here in Simsbury. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. First of all, I want to welcome you to Simsbury and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about the proposed rate increases by Aquarian. While Simsbury appreciates the need to adequately fund the requirements of a modern, reliable infrastructure system, the 19.4% proposed increase with the additional annual increases of 1.8% and 1.9% sought for the two subsequent years after is unacceptable to us. The proposed rate increase will unduly burden residents and businesses still struggling in this economy. For our senior citizens and others living on fixed incomes, the proposed increase will have an especially adverse impact. You mentioned it's about $5 a month. I would just like to point out that's about $60 a year, and for our seniors living on fixed incomes, that's two weeks of groceries. So that is a significant impact. This rate will also particularly impact those businesses that use larger amounts of water, like hotels, pools, restaurants, and our fire department. As you may be aware, at Simsbury's Board of Selectment meeting on March 11, 2013, the Board expressed serious concerns and strong opposition to Aquarian's then-proposed 16.8% increase that it intended to submit to PURA. In a letter to PURA, the Board detailed its concerns that the proposed increase would unduly burden residents and businesses still struggling in this economy. The town received a letter from Mr. Charles Ferlot, Aquarian's president, on March 21, 2013, indicating, "We do not expect the increase allotted to Simsbury to be materially different than the 16.8% noted in our notice of intent." Our residents subsequently received a letter from Aquarian notifying them of Aquarian's attempt to charge 19.4% instead of the 16.8%, a materially different amount than was initially represented to the town. On June 10, 2013, the Board of Selectmen wrote to Mr. Ferlot and Chairman Arthur House of the Connecticut Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, objecting to the 19.4% increase for residents with additional annual increases of 1.8% and 1.9% for the two subsequent years. In its letter to the Board of, in its letter, the Board of Selectmen detailed an increase of 23.1% by all the utilities to the businesses that serve Simsbury residents would be catastrophic. And Aquarian should be required to submit increases more in line with inflationary trends. Further, public service organizations, such as the Simsbury Housing Authority, which already finalized its budget for the coming fiscal year, simply cannot absorb increases of this size from utilities. For the town of Simsbury, the proposed impact of the rate increase will mean an additional $16,000 to $18,000 per year expenditure beyond what has been budgeted, and that includes the Board of Education and the town. As Simsbury and towns all across the state have done during this difficult economic time, Aquarian must do more with less. In keeping with inflationary trends, the town of Simsbury has kept its budgets below the fiscal year 2008, 2009 levels for the last four years in a row, and we expect similar fiscal responsibility from Aquarian. We would also like to take this opportunity to make several requests, and I know you can't respond. Residents were advised of this hearing through letters mailed to each home, but the First Selectmen's Office, and therefore the Board of Selectmen, received no such notice. The town requests the copies of future letters sent to Simsbury residents, and updates on this issue be sent directly to the First Selectmen's Office and 933 Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070. The town of Simsbury each year publishes a six-year capital improvement plan to anticipate expenditures and to plan over time to avoid unexpected or disproportionately large expenditures in any one year. If Aquarian has a capital improvement plan, the town of Simsbury respectfully requests a copy. The town of Simsbury requests a detailed explanation as to why such a large percentage increase is necessary, and how Simsbury residents will directly benefit from the proposed infrastructure improvements that were done. We also request an explanation as to why such a disproportionately large increase would be charged in the first year. Aquarian sent the town of Simsbury a letter dated March 21, 2013, indicating, "We do not expect the increase allotted to Simsbury to be materially different than the 16.8% noticed in our notice of intent." The town of Simsbury views a 19.4% increase, but the subsequent increase is just under 2% for the following two years, materially different than that notice, and respectfully requests an explanation for this additional increase. In conclusion, I want to emphasize our objection to Aquarian's proposed rate increase, which will unduly burden our residences, businesses, and especially those living on fixed incomes. We appreciate your consideration and look forward to your responses. Respectfully submitted, Lisa Hevner, Deputy First Selectman to the town of Simsbury. Amen.
Thank you. Please go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to come to Simsbury to hear our concerns about proposed rate increases for Aquarian. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, I take pride in our town's record of fiscal responsibility while providing our residents with the services that they need. Further, we do this in partnership with our business community and service providers. That said, we appreciate the partnership the town has established with Aquarian and similarly understand the need to appropriately fund and support an effective water system. Simsbury residents are economically diverse. In these economically challenging times, the proposed rate increase of 19.4% would be detrimental to the numerous residents on fixed or single incomes. Subsequently, the proposed increases of 1.8% and 1.9% over an additional two-year period would be devastating and is simply unacceptable. Of additional concern is the potentially adverse impact on our tourism industry, specifically our hotels and restaurants, who utilize a higher volume of water. At the March 11 Board of Selectment meeting and in a letter to the Public Utilities Regulatory Authority, all members expressed strong opposition to the original 16.8% increase. We were then surprised to learn our residents had received a letter from Aquarian proposing a 19.4% increase. At the time residents received this letter, budgets had already been submitted and finalized, subject to referendum, as part of the town's budget process. Similarly, I specifically point to the budget of the Simsbury Housing Authority, having already been submitted to the state of Connecticut, per its director's public testimony at the Board of Selectment meeting on June 10, 2013. An agency of this nature operates within very difficult financial constraints and would not be able to operate at the same level of service if proposed increases went into effect after a budget had been implemented. Further, the Board of Selectmen was not advised of the 19.4% budget increase. This lack of communication is disconcerting. As the governing body for the town of Simsbury, we are responsible for the fiscal soundness of our operating budget. Without open lines of communications and accurate information from our service providers, holding the line on our spending becomes increasingly difficult. We cannot uphold our commitment to open government if we do not have all the information our constituency requires. In closing, I would like to encourage Aquarian to work in partnership with the town of Simsbury to determine a mutually agreeable rate that bears in mind the diverse economic representation of our community. At this time, I also reiterate our objection to the currently proposed increases. Respectfully submitted, Shannon Knoll, Simsbury Board of Selectmen. Thank you.
Sergeant.
Thank you for joining us this evening. My name is Sean Askam, and I'm from the Board of Selectmen. I respectfully request that you give my time to the Fire Marshal, Kevin Kowalski. We have to go to the Board of Selectmen meeting now.
I understand. Let me just ask, is there objection to that from Mr. Kowalski? Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the consideration.
Kowalski, if I could ask you to swear the testimony about to give us the truth, so it'll be God.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please proceed. Thank you, folks.
My name is Kevin Kowalski. I'm Deputy Chief Fire Marshal, Chief of Administrative Services for the Simsbury Fire District. The correspondence is written on behalf of the Simsbury Fire District. The district is a customer of Aquarian and is greatly affected by the proposed rate increases. Under the proposed rate increase, the annual budget of the district will increase by $20,000. Put in perspective, what we do is we pay approximately $200,000, thereabouts, for the benefit of having water in the fire hydrants, not for what we flow, but for the benefit of what the water is in there available for us to use. We pay that on a rated basis of a pipe size, so many feet, and there's a calculation made, and the approximate cost, again, is close to $200,000. So we're looking at an increase of $20,000. Our comments are directed to the proposed rate increase for the public fire and private fire for the Northern Region. Although we feel proposed residential rates are too high, we will limit our discussion to the aforementioned categories. The district understands the need for a cost-of-living rate increase. However, anything more than that would be not warranted or opposed by, it would be opposed by this district. There's no articulated basis for the increase of the 9% for public fire in the Northern Region. It's kind of an arbitrary rate increase, not directly tied to facts and circumstance as exists in Simsbury. Simsbury is a standalone region whereby the water used is obtained by the aquifers in the town. There is no significant infrastructure necessary to provide the water to the town of Simsbury other than the pumps and the generator's backup that you saw here. However, most of it was compared to all the other facilities outside of Simsbury in the Northern District, it appears. This fact also supports the opposition to intended rate equalization, which was brought up several years ago, that that was what was going to try to happen among various regions. Simsbury is unique in its ability to provide its own water to its region, thereby saving Aquarian the need to pipe water from the other region. The fact of the matter is, we pipe water outside of town to East Granby and Granby. The fact is support and opposition to intended rate correction. Aquarian's cost of doing business is less in this region. Any increase to the infrastructure cost is paid for with the increase in a rate schedule based upon the size of the pipe that we pay for. So if they increase the size of the pipe from four-inch to eight-inch, theoretically, that price will go up for those feet of pipe that were put into the ground. So we'll be paying more forever for those, for that increase in that situation. So that increase is already born, and it's paid for in the rears. Private mains are not maintained. The fire hydrants, Simsbury Fire Department maintains the hydrants. We take, we work on the hydrants. The only place that works on their hydrants is Tariffel. Tariffel works on their own hydrants. We pay a far smaller share to put fire hydrants and have the ability of water in Tariffel than it is here. So maybe we should, when we put the cost sharing up, we could potentially put in the cost of what it is for water in Tariffel. That would probably be a pretty good point, instead of selecting the highest-rated water in the state of Connecticut. The price being paid for the water is usage of the water. There is no basis for the 9% rate hike for the right to use the water. The district also opposes the 18.3% rate hike for private fire category for Northern Region. What that is, basically, is the fire hydrant that is provided to businesses and other customers that have fire sprinklers. They put a pipe in the ground, they run it through their sprinkler system, and it's static unless they have a fire, or they test it once or twice a year. They're consequently going up on that rate, 18.3%, with no attainable addition. So again, it should be no more than a cost-of-living increase for this region. The increase will affect business developments in Simsbury, such as the Hartford property. In this economic market, such high arbitrary rate hikes is not within the best interests of the community. Aquarian has not specified how the Northern Region specifically warrants such a rate hike. The district understands Aquarian's need, as they may articulate it, but do not believe they apply to the Northern Region and Simsbury specifically. So I thank you for the opportunity to express our concerns. Kevin Kowalski.
Okay. We're going through the list, so from here on, first come, first served. Thank you, sir. Thanks very much. So I have, and I'm going to butcher this, it looks like Nancy Hall? Hall? Okay, we're going through the lists, so from here on, first come, first served. Thank you, sir. Thanks very much. So I have, and I'm going to butcher this, it looks like Nancy Hall? Nancy, it looks like H-A-A, I want to say K. Oh, it's from Board of Selectmen. Okay, it's not here. Let me go to Barbara Dolinsky. Barbara Dolinsky.
Like what you want.
Thank you. Ms. Dolinsky, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is true? So help you God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
My name is Barbara Dolinsky. I live on 56 Library Lane. Aquarian Water Company started in Bridgeport in the 1800s, was acquired by UK's Calda Group in 2000, which then sold the company to Australia's Macquarie Bank in 2006 because of poor profit performance. Louder, okay. Poor profit performance. Neither of these offshore holding companies nor Aquarian is covered by Connecticut's Freedom of Information laws. Aquarian continues to aggressively buy independent water companies and aquifer-bearing land in New York, Connecticut, Massachusetts, and New Hampshire. During periods of high rain, they complain about low profits and ask for rate increases. Meanwhile, Aquarian continues to overextend its liabilities and accelerates buying more water companies than land. Their main objective is to relentlessly, their words, not mine, pursue buying more resources at cheap price and repackage and resell them to the public at a higher rate. I suggest Aquarian refocus its efforts to being accountable for the infrastructure it already has, rather than to focus on new acquisitions continually. No company can maintain that pace of acquisitions and properly address infrastructure liabilities it encourages. The public has no hard facts about compensation packages or long-term plans. We have a right to affordable water, as this is the public's resource. We have a right to know Aquarian's finances and plans. There has to be a balance between corporate profits and the public good. There has to be accountability. I suggest, A, rejection of the proposed rate increase and encourage the company to propose an increase in line with the economies and communities it supposedly serves. B, I suggest the state of Connecticut place a moratorium on further acquisitions by Aquarian Water Company until all liabilities for deficient infrastructure are evaluated and made public with a long-term, with long-term plans and specific goals in writing and publicly available. C, I suggest the legislature should pass new laws ASAP, so freedom of information applies to companies who affect the public's health, safety, and welfare. I suggest a full investigation of Aquarian's ties to, excuse my pronunciation, Duoyu Global Water in China and ties to appointed and elected officials here and throughout New England. It is my firm belief that the public has become a victim of aggressive piracy. Let us stop this now and push for openness and accountability. Thank you for listening. And my addendum, which is only 30 seconds, is that a few years ago, when Mr. Vincent was First Selectman, it took Aquarian over two months to acknowledge and fix a water main leak on Eagle Road and Library Lane. They seemed to have neither the motivation or the technical expertise to handle this, and Simscroft had to do the work. At Heritage Glen Condominiums, water main leaks are common, and Aquarian is happy to delay detection and repair. One recent water bill for one pit for one month was almost $12,000. Aquarian also makes us pay for insurance to them in case our fire hydrants are not sufficient to fight a fire. We happen to have three ponds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dolinsky. And ladies and gentlemen, let me apologize in advance if I butcher your name. Next, I have Patricia, I believe it's Carbone. Patricia Carbone.
I didn't, I didn't offer to speak.
Oh, okay. You don't have to speak. So Ms. Kowalski already spoke, so I am at Mr. Robert Burke. Mr. Burke, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I came here tonight when I, when my wife asked me that the hearing was going on, so I want to say that I have a lot of faith in the Office of the Consumer Council to do their job appropriately. However, there are a few things I want to point out to everyone. The rate increase that is being proposed, if my memory serves me correctly, even exceeds the rate increase that was given to CLMP back many years ago when they put Millstone III into service, which at least served all of Connecticut. The $143 million that Aquarian represents as having been spent was not spent on the town of Simsbury, but was spent on the entire northern district. To consider that, that $143 million, I find it difficult to believe represents, in their rate base, a similar amount to what Millstone III represented to CLMP. In this period of time, where interest rates have been extremely low for any company, I find it difficult to believe that there is a tremendous amount of interest expense that has been gained or that has been expended by Aquarian during this period, again, making the rate increase seem extremely unreasonable. They talk about electric energy is having gone up over the last several years with the increased amount in natural gas. The electric rates in New England as a whole have gone down, and in Connecticut as well. Even though Connecticut may have slightly higher rates than some of the other states in New England, the shale gas coming in has reduced electric rates. And so I, again, from an energy portion, I find it very difficult to believe that their rate increase is anywhere near what it should be. And with that, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. I have Eve Bednarik.
Sue.
Oh, is it Sue? Oh, I'm sorry.
Sue Bednarik, oh, sorry.
Ms. Bednarik, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes. Sue Bednarik, 119 East Sweet Dog Street. When you guys came in the past to propose an increase, it was continually stipulated on the fact that we were going to get more services, we were going to get, you know, more pipes redone, our infrastructure was going to be, you know, completed, and that was part of the argument way back when Village Water Company sold to Aquarian. We're kind of like the Wicked Stepsister. We really honestly get ignored. We have all sorts of water buildup. I've had pressure problems at my house because people said that down the street, up the hills, they wanted to get more pressure. There's a lot of corroding on various pipes. I just don't understand. First of all, I never understood why it was valuable for us to be part of Aquarian. During the storm, I stayed at my friend's house, and they have Avon Water Company. They don't have a problem. They have the best water in the world. My suggestion is that Aquarian cut a deal with Avon Water, sell us to Avon Water, so we can get out of the Aquarian piece, because we just keep getting screwed by them. So, thank you very much.
Ms. Bednarik. Glenn Anderson. Glenn Anderson. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson.
No worries.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes. My name is Glenn Anderson, and I'm an 18-year resident of Simsbury, live at 19 Hoskins Road. And I'm 100-plus percent against the proposed rate increase. And I'm going to do a little repeating of what the Deputy First Selectman said, because I think she said it so eloquently and gets right to the point. When they, when they sent the letter to Pura and to Aquarian, they said they appreciated the need for adequately funding the requirements of a modern, reliable water infrastructure system. The 19.4% proposed increase is unacceptable. The proposed rate increase will unduly burden the residents and businesses still struggling in this economy. Aquarian must do more with less. Town, they also cited about their fiscal year in 2008, 2009, keeping the levels there for the last four years, and Aquarian should show the same fiscal responsibility. That really gets to the point. We learned tonight in the presentation from Aquarian, and I thought it was interesting, that they spent $143 million in improvements, money they didn't have. Sounds like Washington, doesn't it? The federal government. I know Aquarian is owned by a group of investors, but that does not give Aquarian the right for a double-digit rate increase for their investors. To quote other residents that I've read articles about, this is outrageous, appalling, and it should not be allowed or approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Sally Rinaldi. Sally Rinaldi? None? Okay. Anne Helwig?
I don't know.
Going to pass? Bruno Hazen?
What is that? What's that faucet that's corroding? That's the before.
Sure. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do. My name is Bruno Hazen, 307 Hop Meadow. I'm a proud resident of the town of Simsbury for the last 22 years. I just want to say, say shame on you guys, why not just put your increase on usage? Not cross the board for rights to use the water. It's God-given water. What would you do that for? Is this somebody's pension we're funding? I hope you're not approving that. I hope there's more clarification on that. I hope to God so, because shame on us if we're approving somebody's pension or somebody's increase. Aquarian Water, you failed us. Customer Service, I called about corroded pipe, and I'm going to show you that in a second. They said, well, maybe your water is too hot. I said, 120 degrees. Well, maybe you're grounding your meter, your electric, to the pipe, and the question goes, how else would you ground the meter? Look in your basement. All of us are grounded to the water pipe. My pipe's been corroding for the last 20 years. This is number six pipe, faucet, rather, that I replaced at $200. Who pays for that? Am I paying for that, or they are? Customer Service said, well, the guy's on vacation. I called at the end of May. He'll be back on June 3rd. It is July 8th, and I haven't heard from Customer Service. Poor quality. That's Customer Service. And let's see here, is the upgrade for all these pipes, is that local or somewhere down in Fairfield County? Let them burden that. Are these new pipes laying down, or is that an existing pipe you're replacing? Let us know. Freedom of information. Beyond the clear and beyond the open. What's this about? 19%? No. We shoot it down. Please help us. You have the power to do so. It's an absurd increase. Listen, last and not least, and I'll make everybody laugh about this, this is a British company, shame on them, to pull the rug from under us on the 4th of July. Thank you.
Hazen, are you going to submit that as testimony or as an exhibit?
It's an exhibit.
Why don't you just bring it over here?
Well, I'm going to show it to everybody.
No, no, it's for us. It's an exhibit, so.
Well, I don't understand that. I just want to show, so everybody knows.
Well, it's either going to be in the record, or you can bring it back.
It is on the record. This is corrosion that's caused by no water softener. I asked them, like, well, MDC, Avon Water do have that. They said, we don't use water softener. I said, like, what are you talking about? Look at this pipe. This is two years, the faucet, two-years-old faucet. It's happening all the time. Last and not least...
Thank you. Just leave that right there. You're going to leave all that right here?
Okay.
Good. Does that conclude your testimony? Does that conclude your testimony?
One last, one last item. The weight comparison, if I recall, when a slide showed New York City was less than Simsbury. Really? Really? Have you tasted the water in New York City compared to our chlorinated water? You turn on that water and it stinks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hazen. Ann Nelson. Ann Nelson.
No, I haven't said that.
Okay, thank you. Betty Hudson. Betty Hudson. Pass. Sandra Petro. David Bloom. David Bloom. Does one of you testify, testimony about to give is the whole truth, so help you God?
I do. My name is Dave Blumey. I'm at Levin Muscat Trail. And I'm not going to try not to repeat the things that have been said, but I, there are several points that I think I would like to make. One is that when we did receive this announcement, I attempted to look at the company's financials and to determine what their rate, what their profit rate or their rate of return on their investment is. I'm unable to do that. Again, as someone said earlier, one lady said, the financials, because it is an international company, are very, very difficult to obtain. Hopefully, this material is provided to the Public Utilities Board, and you'll be able to determine that. Because it seems to me that when they speak of transparency and openness, this is a utility that's granted to a company to supply water to residents, and certainly in that return, they need to earn, they need to earn a profit. But the question is, what is that profit? And so that's one point. Second point is that Simsbury is uniquely blessed in that we have the aquifers and the water that we receive comes from wells. And so therefore, the cost of providing the water in Simsbury is significantly less than it is in most communities. It would seem to me, it appears to me, that what Aquarian is doing is basically attempting to raise the rates in the northern district particularly, and basically on the backs of Simsbury, they're using the low cost of producing water and delivering water in Simsbury and equalizing that across their entire structure. And I think that's, again, inappropriate, because Simsbury does provide a fairly unique situation with low-cost water. I'm opposed to this rate increase, certainly if they're, if it's justified in terms of a modest increase to go with this, but the rate of inflation in the United States and in the world as a whole has been very low. And the cost of interest, as someone else said, the cost of borrowing money has been very low. So I think that Aquarian is using this opportunity to be on the backs of the people in Simsbury, and it's probably very inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. David Ryan. David Ryan.
Ryan, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir. My neighbors and I, I live at 20 West Lodge, West Ledge Road. I'm David Ryan. Yes? David Ryan. Thank you. 20 West Ledge Road. My neighbors and I have not seen the benefit of $143 million in capital improvements in Simsbury for sure. We continue to have dirty water. The turbidity of the water is amazing. Some days, it's so dark it looks like tea. And I've asked Aquarian to look at it. They did some work. It's 40 pounds per inch at our intake, and when I run the gallon rate up to about five gallons a minute, it goes down to 22. They did some checking. Were unable to make any difference. Village Water checked our pipe between our house and the road and said that was okay. So something is amiss, and we haven't been able to get anything corrected in that respect. Other times, there's so much chlorine in the water, you turn it on and you can smell the chlorine, it seems like a swimming pool. So I think there's, there's quality control issues, and we'd like to see those cleared up. There are three or four people right around me with all the same problems. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. It looks like Hector Lugar. Is it Lugar? Again, I apologize if I butchered anybody's names. Unintentional. Did I get it? Close?
Not even close.
Please, you could state your name.
Hector Logan.
Logan, okay. How is it, close? Mr. Logan, do you swear that testimony you're about to give is the truth? So help me God.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Please proceed. My apologies.
My name is Hector Logan. I'm from 41 Farms Village Road. I've been here since 2006, and I personally am satisfied with the water quality and the service provided by Aquarian. And basically, what I want to say is I think, I feel that they should be allowed to charge reasonable rates in order to operate the water system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the list of people signed to speak. So at this time, I would ask, is there anyone who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Sir, if you would come up, state your name. I'll swear you in, and then if you could sign our sheet before you go, just so we have you for the record. Could you state your name?
David C. Balboni, 13 Fox Den Road, West Simsbury.
Mr. Balboni, do you swear that testimony you're about to give is the truth? So help me God.
I do.
Thank you, sir.
This looks very familiar for people. I used to be the chairman of the Village Water Company for about 18 years, and we elected to sell this water company to Bridgeport Hydraulic, which was being acquired by the British company Aquarian. The last gentleman that spoke up here made, I thought, the most pointed comment on what should happen, that a modest increase is certainly in order, but 19% is unconscionable. Now, I wanna go back because after, we had a very wild meeting here when we were selling this water company to Aquarian, Bridgeport Hydraulic. And Commissioner Bukowski was the man that came in and conducted the hearing, and the place was packed. In fact, our local fire marshal, I guess he's left, he shut the place down, so people had to go out. That's how contentious this whole issue was. The reason we sold the water company was because, under the system that was then empowered by the state through the DPUCA, we could not generate sufficient funds from our rate base in order to put in all the things that had been put in by this company. Now, as a result, they have now changed that to some extent. You have a couple of, you call them wiggies or something, or the automatic increases that go in. So there's been some recognition on small water companies, and I see the Avon guys are here, and this really helps a small water company to be able to stay local. Now, we're in the throes of this big corporation. I think they're honorable men, and I personally spoke three times in the first 10 or 12 years when they came before the town to request a hearing like this, a rate increase. And at that time, the rate increase was quite moderate and low by comparison with this. I wanna say 7% to 9%. I thought at that time it was highly proper that we have a rate increase in that magnitude. This is absolutely ridiculous, and my only positive suggestion is that you conduct another hearing here before you have your major closeout hearing in the state, and allow these people to bring other information, and also be prepared to bring back to this town the kind of input you've made from a capital standpoint on the town, the Village Water Company. You've done a lot when you did it. I appreciate it. You lived up to everything that you said you would do. Now, it's gone amok, not because of Aquarian necessarily, but because of this great desire, and I think the DPUC has some responsibility on that, to amalgamate this whole thing into a big, big water company for the state of Connecticut. And that's where we are right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Balboni, could you just fill that out for me, please? Appreciate it. Yes, certainly. Again, I'd ask her the same thing. Will you give us your name?
David Toll, 7 Avery Way.
And you promised that testimony you're about to give is the truth? So help me God.
Yep. Just one, one more comment I'd like to make. I can't remember the previous gentleman's name, but it's been reported in the paper that the chair, the head of the Aquarian Water Company made over $8 million last year. And I'd like to ask you if you ever made that kind of money as head of the, of the Village Water Company? The chairman of Aquarian made over $8 million US last year. Now, that was his salary. Did you, did you ever make that kind of money as chairman of the Village Water Company?
This is, this is not really a cross-examination, and neither should you, so.
Just a little humorous anecdote. That gives you an idea where your money's going here. Yep. Okay. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other takers? Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm gonna change my mind. I gotta say something.
Sure. Can you remind me, you were earlier than... To change her mind, as I recall. Uh, let's see.
Pat Carbone.
Pat Carbone. Ms. Carbone, do you promise testimony about to give is the whole truth? And if you swear the truth, so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Ms. Carbone.
I'm approaching this from a different angle. Yeah, I'm a senior citizen. So, I've lived in this town for 47 years, and I had a very successful retail career, and that's the good news. The bad news is, they don't give a pension. So I'm living on social security, and I've been in my condominium at Talke Acres for 27 years. That's my home. I don't have a family. I have no one to back me up. We are just now embarking on a big restructuring of our landscaping and just had new roofs put on and some wonderful things for our condominiums that we haven't done in years and years. So my condo fee is well over $450 a month already. We don't have a swimming pool or a golf course. We're very modest. And I don't know what we're gonna do. I'm not alone over there. There are a lot of us who are just cringing and scared to death because now we have these contractors that are gonna come out and put up some new trees to replace the ones that have fallen and give us a little bit of help with our landscaping, and we're gonna have to water it. So I just wanted to say thanks very much because you're making the last years of our lives very uncomfortable, and I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carbone. Anyone else like, would like to exercise their prerogative? If not, I will remind you, we do have representatives of Aquarian. If you have further questions, we have the Office of Consumer Counsel, Mr. Thompson here in the front row, and there are still some members of our staff here. I wanna thank you all for taking the time this evening to come out and share your thoughts with us. We appreciate it, and at this point, this hearing is now closed, and we are off the record.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.